The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint meeting of the Board of Finance and City Council. I'd like to ask those of you who are able to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the joint meeting please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
John Smith, Board of Finance.
Mike Moth, Board of Finance.
Nick Jones, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Greg Han, City Council.
Scott Rosado, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Brittany Barney, City Council.
Maria Brian, Board of Finance.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zappo-Sassu. The purpose of the joint meeting is to handle items that have already been seen by both the City Council and the Board of Finance, so we come together to ratify them. So there is little discussion at these meetings, and we move rapidly through the items. The first item is, one, approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on November 12, 2019.
No approval. Second.
Any discussion on the minutes?
The minutes as presented. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is the Consent Calendar, which contains items 2A through J. Are there any items on the Consent Calendar that any member of the joint meeting would like to pull off for further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, item 2H, if you can have that removed, the Board of Finance is going to be rescinding that appropriation, and what they're going to do is they are going to reallocate the money to a different fund. So if we can pull off, someone would make a motion to pull off 2H.
Certainly. Would someone be so kind as to make that motion?
Second.
Okay, so now we are going to remove item H from the Consent Calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Going back to the Consent Calendar, dealing with items 2A through J excluding H, is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3 is to make an additional appropriation of $3,180 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by Citation Proceeds.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4 is to approve the resolution increasing the appropriation for the Memorial Boulevard Intra-District Magnet School project by $8,109,700 for an aggregate appropriation of $63 million, and to waive the reading of the resolution but to include it as part of the minutes.
Second.
Discussion.
Madam Mayor, as I stated at the Board of Finance meeting, I will be voting no on these two resolutions until I have more information regarding the closing of the schools and also preliminary budget as to what the operational cost for the Memorial Boulevard school will be. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? This is a resolution, so we will proceed with a roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 And the Chair votes yes. The resolution passes. Item 5 is to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds or notes in the amount of $63 million for the Memorial Boulevard Intra-District Magnet School project, and to waive the reading of the resolution but to include it as part of the minutes.
So moved.
Discussion on this resolution. Hearing none, we will vote, roll call, starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 The mayor votes yes. Resolution is approved. Next item on our agenda is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by our Controller, Diane Waldron.
Good evening, everyone. So you have the report through the end of November. I've been trying to do something a little bit different every single month when I give you this report, is just give you a comparison to last year at the same time of the fiscal year. So our tax revenues are pretty consistent with where we were last year, which is good. Our prior-year tax revenues, though, are slightly ahead of where we were last year at this time, so we're about $180,000 more than we collected last year through November. Same thing with our building permit revenues. Right now, we're at 68.3% of the budget through November, which is $716,000. Last year at this same time, we were at $586,000. So again, this revenue was coming in stronger than last year for the first five months of the fiscal year. Conveyance taxes, again, are coming in strong. We're about $80,000 more in revenue than we had anticipated. The one that we are watching, which I know we talk about every month, is the investment earnings. We're at $584,000, or 62% of the budget, through November. Prior-year earnings through November was $432,000, so we're hoping that we're going to be able to see this trend as we go forward, because any surplus that we can get in these revenues will be needed as we go into next year's budget. On the expenditure side, not too much to really report. It's five months, and, you know, everybody seems to be pretty much within their budget, so really nothing to report on the expenditure side. Just wanted to report, I did mention budget. All of the budget information was distributed to the department heads, and I think today all of the worksheets and everything was started to go out to them. If not today, I know they'll get it before the end of the week. So everybody's diligently starting to work on the budget for next fiscal year. I am pleased to report, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed, that I believe the audit will be issued, at least dated, by the end of this week. We are hoping that we will have the final audits by the middle of next week, and I think for the last three years, we've been waiting, like, on December 31st, like, I think last year was 7 o'clock, when it was finally issued. So this was a huge achievement. We wanted to have it done a little bit earlier, but a few things with our OPEV valuation delayed us a bit, so it's very good news, and I know my staff, between Robert Manuel and Skip Gillis, they worked really hard to make sure that the auditors got everything that they needed. The one other thing that I did want to mention, I kind of skipped over, and it's written right in front of me here, the supplemental motor vehicle tax bills will be going out probably the end of this month. Tom Denote, the assessor, did send up an email that he finished completing that portion of the grant list, and the billing on that is about $2.28 billion, $2.28 million, oh my God, we wish it was a billion dollars, $2.28 million. We budgeted 1.4. So right there, we'll also generate a surplus, and we have had used that to try and generate surpluses over the last few years in that account. One of those things that we don't want to chase because we don't know what the supplemental will be. So that's also another little bit of good news to report. With that, does anybody have any questions on anything that I mentioned, didn't mention, anything in my report? No? With that, I hope everyone has a happy holiday season and a happy new year.
Thank you.
You as well.
Is there any other business to come before the joint meeting? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And before we do that vote, I'll just let everybody know that our regular City Council meeting will be starting promptly at 7 o'clock, which is in about seven minutes, and for anybody who might want to get up and stretch, the Veterans Strong Office, which is directly across the hall, is hosting an open house right now, so if you so inclined, you can walk over there, and we will be back for 7:00. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And welcome to the December City Council meeting. I'd like to ask for everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the members of the City Council please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
Two. Greg Han, District 1.
Scott Rosado, District 1.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Brittany Barney, District 3.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
And I'm Mayor Ellen Zappo-Sassu. The first item on our agenda for tonight is our monthly Moment of Reflection, and I'm going to defer to Councilman Rosado tonight.
Thank you. The city commemorated Pearl Harbor on Saturday, 78 years after that fateful day. Tonight's Moment of Reflection is to remember and honor those who served in WWII and those who never made it home. Please pause for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rosado. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting on November 12, 2019, and the special meetings that were held on November 19, 2019, and November 26, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion on any of the sets of the minutes that were circulated electronically? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under our spotlight for public participation, tonight we are welcoming the Bristol Eastern Soccer Team, who enjoyed an undefeated season this year. So I'd like to ask first the captains to stand and be recognized. Obviously, leadership is a major part of any successful team, so I'd like to specifically congratulate all of you for having this as such a special part of your high school memories. And now, if the rest of the team would stand and be recognized for what was a phenomenal year. Also with us, we have Coach Bunty Ray in the second row, and Coach Sweet was unable to join us, but is he in his 51st year? 51st year of coaching, so again, a great recipe of success. And as we are the all-heart community, we love to recognize when things like this, which are woven really into the fabric of what defines us as a community, with all of us cheering you on and reading all those Bristol Press articles and the Observer articles, but it was really a great season. So we are proud to have you here tonight, representing our city, and for all that you did. And I'm going to ask our Marketing Director, Dawn Nielsen, to come forward, because we do have some swag for you guys in recognition of your great season. So what she's going to do is present some gifts to all of you. I'd also like to recognize Jake Waznicki, who was named All New England, as well as All American Team by US soccer coaches, one of five in Connecticut, to be recognized. And now I'll just ask, is there any of the captains or the coach would like to say a few words? This is your public speaking extra points for tonight. Come on, boys. Jake.
It is on TV, but it's not a wide audience, you know?
Yeah, thank you.
On behalf of our team, our school, we'd like to thank you for having us here. Tremendous season from these guys. The support that we get from the community is very important. The coverage we get from the press and the Observer is important as well. I've been doing this 20 years, and Coach Sweet's been there 50, and, you know, you start to realize how important it is that, you know, records, we talk about records, we talk about things, but the relationships that they've created and the bond that they have, and what they're going to do moving forward is probably as important as their record. And I'm very proud of these guys. A lot of individual accomplishments. We had five all-conference players. We also had, you know, besides the undefeated season, we had Coach Sweet earning his 400th win, and that was a very important goal for these guys, because they're very unselfish, and what they do is, they come to work every day, they play hard every day, and they do it not only for themselves, but for Eastern and the city of Bristol. So thanks for recognizing them, we really appreciate it, and it's an honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would you like to stay for the rest of the meeting? And just thank you to the parents as well. I know it's an exciting time to watch scholastic sports, and I know that all of you were integral parts of the team as well, supporting them and making sure they were where they needed to be and what they were doing. So congratulations to all of you, too. I hope you enjoyed the season as much as they did. Okay, so the attorneys can now resume their seats in the front. Everybody else can move forward if they want. I have police in the audience, and now I have firefighters. Is there something that I don't know about this meeting? Okay. We have no other public participation, so I'd like to ask for the indulgence of the City Council, that before we go to announcements, that we go to the Consent Calendar. You can pull off, see, I was looking at the wrong thing. We have Consent Calendar on Agenda Item 5. Is there a motion to move it up?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the reason we're doing that is that three items do need to be pulled off. I'm going to start with Councilman Rosado. What would you like to be pulled off? Oh, well, first we'll vote, so we're going to move it up. Everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving up, Councilman Rosado.
Letter C.
Okay. I'd like to remove item D.
Your Honor, I'd like to remove item F.
Okay, so we are going to have a motion, if somebody could so make it, to remove items 5C, D, and F for discussion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First, in lieu of Parks Report, we're going to handle this item now. Councilman Rosado, 5C.
To award contracts 2P-20-025, Development of a Citywide Parks and Recreation Master Plan to Activeit, Inc., for $146,910, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
Second.
Discussion. Councilman Rosado, did you want to just give a brief overview, so everyone understands what we're doing?
Yes. Activeit is a national firm that has worked with the gold medal-winning parks across the country, and they were picked out of about five other people who have bid. They weren't the highest, but they were, or the lowest, but they were very well comparable with every, within the people who have bidded. What we did find with them is they are very familiar with the CAPR accreditation, that within the next two years, we will be pursuing for our own Parks and Recreation Department. So they are highly recommended, and we look forward to working with them.
Are there any questions or concerns?
I just have a question. I don't know if you would know the answer to this, Scott, but do you know if the city has had a plan like this done in any recent memory, or do you know, Ellen?
We do. We had one done in 2006, which resulted in the Rockwell Park upgrades, as well as Brackett and Stocks being redone. There was a tentative plan for Page, but the money ran out, and so that's where we ended up. So the plan currently on the books is going to be built upon, with an emphasis on Page, as well as the other parks that were not touched.
Great. Well, I think that's helpful to have kind of context to, because I wasn't aware, when that was done last, and 14 years is a long time. I know lots changed in 14 years, even with just efficiencies that we may be able to make in the parks. So, thank you, that's helpful.
Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 5D is to approve the tax assessment freeze application for Bristol Armory, LLC, the owner of 61 Center Street, Bristol, for the rehabilitation of a blighted property with the restoration of a retail warehouse structure per Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-57. So this tax assessment freeze was approved by the Co-Enforcement Committee last week. It's on our Consent Calendar. I've pulled it off because one of the owners of Bristol Armory, Bunty Ray, is here with us, and I wanted to just have the motion in a second and then discussion, for him to update us about what's going on at that building and anything else that you may have questions on. It's very rare that we actually have someone who is in the audience for a tax freeze assessment, but he and the owner, George Carpenter, have done a phenomenal job there, and I think it's important to highlight that. So I'd like to ask someone to make a motion to approve that tax assessment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and for a discussion, I'd like to invite you to the microphone, and maybe you could just give us a little bit, 30-second view of how you facilitated the renovation of your space within this vacant building, which has really been an eyesore ever since the military closed it in 2002.
I have to apologize, I came here for the tea, but now I'm here for a tax assessment. We're super excited. Just this last month, I can't say that we were officially, we had our opening, but I can't say we were officially ready. So in this time in the month, what we did was, we started throwing things together. We were able to donate the facility to St. Joe's for games and for practices, because Chapter 126 was closed, so we were able to do that for the community. On December 20th, one of our own, John Phelan, he'll be getting the Bronze Star, and we're going to donate the facility, obviously, for that, one of our own as well. We were able to have one fundraiser, just to see what it would be like. We found out that we need to have acoustic guitars, and not full bands for now, but we're working on doing some different things. We're booked right now in January for soccer, for indoor baseball training, for different things that we want. We're still looking for something in there during the day, but we know something will come up. We have a lot of things that we, a lot of people that we've talked to and contacted. It's a great space. Just the people that have come in, we had a tournament, a basketball tournament, for, I'd say, about 15 to 20 towns that have come in, and they're very interested in the pictures and the history of it. We look forward to adding memorabilia and keeping that. We kept the old backboards, too. We're still trying to figure out if we're going to make a table out of that, or whatever we can. But just having all the young men that were to my right a moment ago, giving them a place, you know, when they're really young, and being able to connect with their coaches and other people, and also, the best thing that we've been able to do is bring people like Mitch Rossi, Terrell Holmes, like, and a list of other people, people who have played sports, went through the town, now are coming back to help coach kids. And we're not one sport, we're multiple sports, so we're open to a lot of different things and a lot of different venues. And it's a great assembly hall as well. So we're working that out, we're working with local businesses. Chunky Tomatoes come in, Southside's come in, some other restaurants want to come in. We're looking to do some wine tastings and some other things for the town, so George Carpenter's been outstanding, the council's been outstanding. I appreciate all you guys that showed up for that opening night. So we'll be there for eight years and beyond, hopefully, and we're going to continue to do good things for Bristol. Thank you for all the help that you've given us with the, not only just the freeze, but the grant money and everything else. You know, it's definitely a joint venture, so we're looking forward to doing better things.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and moving on to the last item that we're pulling off, which is 5F.
Your Honor, can we take a vote on the last?
Oh, sure. Bunty, we're going to vote now, too. I almost forgot. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You're good.
Okay, item 5F.
Thank you, Mayor. To approve Amendment 2 to Contract 2P-18-064B, Architectural and Engineering Services for Renovations at Memorial Boulevard Intra-District Arts Magnet School with Quisenberry, Arcari, and Malik, LLC, for $275,000, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute said amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
So discussion. Councilman Proleski, can you enlighten us as to this?
I would, thank you, Your Honor. You know, the committee is comprised of diverse membership with varying experiences, and a couple of people who we would recognize easily here are John Ladavico and John Smith, who are very active within the municipal boards and things, but they also have great experience in construction in their careers. We were approached by our architects for a significant increase in their contract, and it really stems from a number of extra meetings with the state of Connecticut, with the State Historical Committee, the Hazmat, the Office of School Construction, OSC, and a number of additional meetings with our committee, due to making the school work from a budgetary standpoint, but also mirroring the budget with what's necessary for programming. So the increased meetings, the amount of the redesign, if you remember, this project started at $54.8 million, it ballooned up to over $70 million, and we brought it back to $63 million. So in each of those cases, it took the architects to guide us in terms of making that building what we want it to be. So that's really the essence of the $275,000. There's a number of components that are going on right now, the final design stage, we're moving towards the bid process, and we're working in the negotiations with the Barnes Group for additional parking on their land. So there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, but Your Honor, I want to give an update to the council and the viewership with some significant changes, and give an explanation for the increase in the contract.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Councilman Proleski regarding the MBS?
I would just like to add that, you know, in reviewing these city agendas in a different way as a City Council person, I didn't realize that through the Agenda Center, every Agenda item, you can click on an attachment to see more details about those items. So if you were curious to see the actual individual items that were requested by this architect, you can actually read them for yourself on the city website, and that goes with anything that has a little bit of a, it's like a number and a letter next to it with a hyperlink that you can click. So FYI, just to everybody that's watching, for your own kind of transparency, these things you can view yourself without just hearing it from us, too. So I just wanted to add that.
Good point. Sometimes that stuff is secondhand to us, and we forget to point it out.
Yep.
Hearing no other conversation, is motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back up to the regular consent calendar, we will consider items 5A, B, and E. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And resuming at the top of the agenda with announcements.
Your Honor, who made the motion for A, B, and E? Councilman Hahn?
Some over here.
Hahn?
Thank you. Moving up to Agenda Item 4, starting with announcements. Councilman Fordier?
The only one I have is in relation to Agenda Item 11, which has to do with another grant that the city has procured for our opioid response here as a city. I just wanted to point out that in addition to all the public service announcements that we've been doing on our website and other places, that all of the work we've done as an opioid task force for, I believe, over 18 months has had $0 of the city attached to it. It's all been grant money, and we've leveraged as much as $175,000 altogether over the last 18 months to increase our response to the opioid crisis here in Bristol, but it has not been city funds. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Councilman Barney?
All right, thank you so much. So I have two announcements to make tonight. The first is regarding an important issue happening in the 3rd district. There is a zoning concern that's been brought on Redstone Hill Road. There's a lot of concerned residents with that issue. There was a zoning meeting that was supposed to happen this week. It's been rescheduled to January, just so that it could be a single-issue meeting, because we know it's probably going to attract a large crowd of people. So the Department of Public Works has rescheduled that to January, mid-January. On the topic of me now probably giving a tutorial on the Agenda Center tonight, there is a notify me button on the Agenda Center. So if you want to see that, as soon as it comes up, find the zoning board on the Agenda Center, and click notify me, and you can subscribe for a notification for as soon as that's released, so that you can know what's going to be coming up for that meeting. You can do that with any of the meetings if you're interested in seeing what's happening in the city. Second item is a little bit less intense. It's the Federal Hill Reverse Parade. I live on Federal Hill, within walking distance to the reverse parade, and I have a lot of great memories, including my dad being photographed in shorts at one of these parades when I was younger. And so it was a great thing to see come back to life. And the city did a great job taking that over with the Parks Department, the Fire Department, the Police Department, local business, and even Santa lending a hand. It was awesome to join my family. We were the last people there. The road actually opened up again by the time we left. So we had a great time, and I just wanted to thank the city for taking that over so that my family and our friends could enjoy it. And that's it.
Councilman Proleski?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I have one announcement. On December 3rd, the state of Connecticut Department of Transportation had a public hearing here in this chamber regarding a significant construction project that you'll see in a couple of years on the west end. There is an approved, funded construction project that will begin, and they even brought it necessary to bring their design people, their engineers, and their landscape designers to town to talk to us about what their plan was. And the goal of the redesigned roadway is to increase efficiencies, reduce congestion. And they brought something to my attention that I was unaware of. My office is within 100 yards of that location. There were 72 accidents there in the last two calendar years, which I think is an incredible amount. If you're traveling north-south on Route 69, the left-hand turns don't match up. That's going to be fixed. You'll see that Divinity Street will be like a cul-de-sac and will not flow through to the west-end corner. And Pratt Street will be redesigned to take traffic flow from Divinity down to Route 72. So it's a significant project. I think it's going to do wonders for that area. And at present, there will be five properties that are determined to be taken, and five partial takings. So there'll, and there'll be a new parking facility on the northerly side of Route 72. So it's significant, some of the watch, and I thought the state did a wonderful job, Your Honor, both answering questions and putting out, I think, a very well-thought-out plan. Information is on the website, and if anybody here wants to see some of this tonight, I'll stick around. I've got some illustrations, and I think it looks pretty good.
And I believe that our public works structure is picking up the full presentation from the DOT tomorrow, and it will eventually be on the public works website, the entire one that they did that night. So we'll have that as well. Thank you.
Councilman Rosado?
Yes, Your Honor. This fits pretty good together, I think, and it piggybacks off of Bunty Ray, thanking him again for the generosity of utilizing the facility for this special event. It's in regards to John Baylin, who's a Bristol native. For many of those who don't know him, he's a sergeant in first class, and he's currently serving in the Special Forces Unit Station in Colorado. He will be receiving his Bronze Star V device for valor. Those are very rarely are those presented. Special commendations for combat, and again, it stands for valor. That ceremony will take place on December 20th at 4:00 p.m. at the Bristol Sports Armory. All are invited. We encourage those to attend. And you get to see a little bit of what they've done with the armory as well. So we congratulate John and all his achievements, and thank him for his service.
Thank you. Councilman Hahn?
Yes, you know, sometimes people do some things that are so extraordinary that they need to be recognized. Lindsay Vigyu is the Chair of the City Arts and Culture Commission. And she was in surgery last week, and I want to give you a little background. Last year, she saw a sign in, I believe it was a pizza place, that someone from Bristol was looking for a kidney. And she took that very personally. And so what she decided to do was she went through six months of testing, physical and mental testing, to make sure that she was strong enough physically and emotionally to donate her kidney. Now, this was not a person that she knew. But after she had the test and she was cleared, she met with the person in Bristol and said, "You don't know me, but I'm going to donate my kidney for you." And it was a very emotional evening, but it didn't stop there. After that, the Kidney Foundation reached out to Lindsay because she's a universal donor. In other words, her kidney could be used for most anyone that needed it. And there are many that are hard to match. And so they said to her that if she donates her kidney to the foundation, they will put Peter to the front of the list, and he would receive a kidney in addition to the one that Lindsay donated for general use. So she agreed to do that. And last week, she had surgery. Her kidney was harvested, and it was brought to Manhattan, where a teenage young man received the kidney, and it saved his life. And as a result, as promised, Peter is now being scheduled for his surgery as soon as he is able as well. So she saved two lives with this selfless act. And I'm just very happy that we live in a community where we have people as extraordinarily and as selfless as Lindsay Vigyu. So I just wanted to recognize her this evening. Thank you.
Councilman Kelly, can you top that up?
No, and if I had something to say, I would pass.
Keeping the theme of giving and community acts, the city council as a whole will be taking shifts on Saturday, December 21st, to help the Salvation Army out with their bell ringing. If they do not have shifts that are filled, they end up having to pay people to come in and do that, which reduces the amount of money that is then being able to be used in the Bristol community. So you can find us in groups of two, anytime from 10 until 4:00 p.m. at the Stop &amp; Shop on Route 6 on Saturday, December 21st. And I do encourage anyone or any groups or organizations that might even just have an hour to give to help Salvation Army, to call Marge Rivera at 860-583-4651 and volunteer, because the more people that volunteer, the more money will be circulated into the Bristol community. Are there any other announcements? We'd like to point out that there are a variety of other announcements that will be on the board all night for things that are coming up, and they will also be attached to the Nutmeg video when it is rebroadcast. Moving on to reports and committee reports, we're going to start with the Salary Committee, which had a very busy month.
Yes, we did.
The first item, Item 6A, is to approve a request from the Chief of Police to create an additional detective position, effective as soon as possible, and to refer to the Board of Finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
One thing the chief did point out to our committee is that a number of detective positions had been eliminated in years past. And while crime is not necessarily rampant, the crime that we are having, we have cyber crimes and all kinds of computer crimes and new things that involve more investigation than we've needed in the past.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B is to approve a request from the Chief of Police to change a part-time position of Public Safety Dispatcher to a full-time position, effective as soon as possible, and to refer to the Board of Finance. Again, this position has to do with the quality assurance compliance that has to be done. In other words, someone has to be reviewing the emergency calls that we get on a regular basis in order to comply with quality assurance. And we haven't been able to maintain that level of quality assurance, and this will... See that that happens.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second. Any further conversation or discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, to approve a request from the Chief Information Officer to create a new position of Information Technology Coordinator, Local 233, Salary Code 9, and to eliminate one position of Technical Support Specialist, Local 233, Salary Code 11, effective January 4, 2020, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes. This is decreasing the code of a current position.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, to approve a request from the Director of Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services for a four-year wage schedule as presented for part-time and seasonal employees, effective March 1, 2020. And again, this was in response to the state's increase in the minimum wage. And that's going to be a staggered increase over the next four years. So this wage increase, they will not have to come back to us every year. This is just to make sure we're in compliance with the minimum wage.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E is to approve a request from the Director of Parks, Recreation, Youth, and Community Services for the non-bargaining position of Project Coordinator, to be eligible for compensatory time and overtime in the same manner as employees in the BPSA bargaining unit, effective immediately. This is a grant-funded position, and it's just been problematic how to afford compensatory time and overtime when this person does work at events in the community outside of the regular workday. So this is just codifying what should be the standard for her.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I do have one item to bring, if I can, because it's also from Salary. We just had a meeting this afternoon for further coordinating of our Water and Sewer Department. As we all know, we've had two charter revisions that have brought the Water Department and the Sewer Department together, and these are some salary upgrades and changes relative to that.
Are you going to do it as a package?
Okay, and do you want me to read them all? I have this to give to Therese. Therese, do I have to?
Do we have to read all of them? Yeah, we will do that, but do we have to read all of them? There's like seven. Can we do it as a package?
Okay. Therese is suggesting that I at least list the positions, okay?
First, we need a motion to bring the Salary for the Agenda to the table.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So this additional Salary item, as I've said, pertains to the Water and Sewer Department. And this is a request of the Superintendent of Water to upgrade and change the title of the Water Department Office Manager, to upgrade and change the title of the Accountant/IT Support Person, to upgrade and change the title of the Administrative Assistant Accountant/Water, to upgrade and change the title of Administrative Clerk, upgrade and change the title of Water Billing Clerk, upgrade and change the title of Administrative Clerk, create a new position of Sewer Construction Coordinator, and upgrade and change the title of the Superintendent of Water. And all of these were approved, retroactive to July 1st.
So within the reorganization chart that was presented is also the elimination of a position that is no longer needed. And I think for, in the interest of the viewing audience who may have been following this charter revision issue, if the Superintendent of Water can maybe just give a 30-second overview as to the efficiencies that he's seeing and have everybody kind of follow along with this issue. Because for the viewing public, we just upgraded a whole bunch of city employees, created a new position. So let's tell them why.
And after two years, you know I can't talk for 30 seconds, so.
You can have 90 seconds.
There's been many efficiencies that we're already finding, and these changes will actually promote more of those. Having everything in-house is allowing us to recover some assessments that may have been missed because of being in different locations and different departments. Up to $50,000 in the past six months, we've brought in assessments that may not have been paid. We've also found some SOR billing issues and other things. And these future changes will also consolidate a lot of our aspects, especially on our outside division and mark-outs and things of that nature, less staff going out to do the same job. So we're going to see a lot of different efficiencies. To put an actual dollar amount on all that, it's going to take a while. You know, it's going to take a while to actually see the synergy. But we're already seeing it. We saw it today on one construction job, where we were out there at Water and SOR, had to come and assist, and it worked out well.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so with the reorganization presented, approved by the Salary Committee and forwarded here, positions listed by Councilman Fordier, are there any other questions or concerns? Are clarifications needed from the council as we continue this consolidation of the two departments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I believe we have a report from the Real Estate Committee?
Yes, I have an item to bring to council. Pursuant to 7-163E of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Office of the Corporation Council requests that the city council authorize the Real Estate Committee to set a date for a public hearing on the proposed leasing of city-owned property known as 296 Riverside Avenue, aka the Hostess Building. The public hearing is to be held on January 7, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol. The Office of the Corporation Council shall publish said notices in accordance with Connecticut law.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I just want to say that this is, it's great to see property on Riverside Avenue moving and going and cleaning up that area and moving in the right direction. So I was very pleased to see this.
Okay, hearing no other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Starting with other committee reports, I'll start on my far right.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, a school readiness report. Recently, fortunately, people in the school readiness program picked up on the fact that one of the programs was not at full capacity with students. And how that would possibly impact us is that we get a lot of money and grants from the state. And if that program wasn't found, was not found out that it was, in fact, was not at full capacity, we would have had to give money back. But fortunately, it was determined that it was. It was moved to a parallel program, and we're not going to have to give any money back to the state. And one last thing regarding the school readiness council is that... And one last thing regarding the School Readiness Council is that they are partnering with the Town/City Clerk and the Bristol Public Library on a new initiative which is going to be starting on January 1st, and the way it works is this, the program is called "The New Book for Your New Bristol Baby." When a couple has a baby, and they go to the city clerk's office to get a birth certificate, they're given a ticket and a letter. The ticket is in exchange for getting a library card for the infant. The letter tells the parents, generally in most cases, new parents, it gives them guides insofar as how to enrich the baby, read to the baby, and make learning, you know, more effective even at that young age. And the book that they get is a book called "I Love You, Sunshine," which shows you all these different things that are going to enhance the baby's enrichment and growing up. And I was going to speak of the Polar Express as well, Your Honor, but I see it's up on the screen, so we won't be repetitive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hahn.
Yes, from Public Works. There were some issues that came to light when we were speaking with homeowners on Shrub Road. Councilman Rosado and I have been discussing this with the Director of Public Works, and there seems to be some issues with traffic, mailboxes on the wrong side of the road, so it makes it difficult to get the mail when crossing a busy street, and also pedestrian walkways, lack thereof. It can be, with the speeding traffic, very difficult. So many of these items were brought up to us over and over again from several homeowners. So what we're doing currently, I wanted to make sure that they knew that we are addressing the issues. We're looking into the issues and providing, trying to provide some solutions, some tangible solutions. We're assessing some options, and we'll be getting back to the homeowners in the spring, and we're also looking for appropriate funding options for those things that need to be worked on. So this is being brought forward to Public Works, and it is going to be addressed. We're just taking our time to make sure that we look at the right solutions. For the Energy Commission, there's one item on the Energy Commission that is moving forward that I had mentioned a few months ago. We're advancing options to create an energy efficiency fund, and in some areas, it's called a green bank. But we met with the Comptroller to review existing funding options, we've identified some revenue that could be used to kick off the fund, and the purpose of this fund is as we, the Energy Commission identifies areas that we can save money through energy efficiency, a portion of that savings, a small portion of that savings is put into this fund, and the purpose of the fund is to finance other efforts for efficiencies. So it's self-funding of our projects so that we can see more and more advancement of fuel efficiencies. We had a preliminary presentation to the Board of Finance on the general operating principles, and we're developing fund-standard operating procedures and fiduciary oversight and reporting. But an interesting thing is Brian Garcia is the President of the Connecticut Green Bank, and he's going to be attending our next meeting to discuss our options and appropriate approaches toward this fund. So we're very excited about this, because it means a lot for Bristol to be able to reinvest in this type of an effort, so we're very pleased for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Rosado?
Yes, I just want to, on behalf of the Youth Services, would like to recognize the advancement of Sarah Larson to Deputy Superintendent and Steve Bynum to Youth and Community Service Supervisor. These promotions stemmed from the reorganization of our Youth Services and Park Departments merging together, and after extensive interview process, our very own superstars emerged. It's good to see that we're hiring within, and they, it's well-deserved. We wish them continued success in their roles. I also want to make note of the Bristol Police Department, and they've been very busy this holiday season, giving back, they've participated in many events. It's good to see our departments pitching in and giving back to our own community. They participated in events like Shop With A Cop, Stuff A Cruiser, The Santa's Farm, the Children's Parade, and they look to assist in some of the upcoming food drives. So their efforts will ensure a joyous holiday for many, I'm sure. Thanks again for all they do.
Thank you. Councilman Veluski?
Thank you. From the Ordinance Committee, the Committee is working in conjunction with two other city boards, one with Dr. Maderos and the Park Board, on a couple of initiatives. One is to change the vehicle traffic on the Memorial Boulevard to accommodate plans for the Memorial Boulevard School. We're looking at allowing buses to use the Boulevard as part of their operating plan. And two, Dr. Maderos has brought a plan together to us about making all of our parks smoke-free. So we're looking at those two items for the Park Board, and with the BDA Board through its executive director, Mr. Malley, they're thinking about changing and upgrading their name, which I think is a good idea. They're trying to incorporate some contemporary words like economic and community development into their names, and they're going to report back to our ordinance next month. Thank you.
Councilwoman Barney?
All right. Turn on my microphone first. So I do have a couple of committee reports. I wasn't able to go to the Board of Library Directors' meeting because it was canceled due to snow, but they did forward an announcement they'd like to share, that the Friends of the Bristol Public Library will hold a holiday mini-sale from Monday, December 2nd, so already started, to December 31st in the lobbies of the Public Library and Man Ross Memorial Library. So they're going to have nearly new gift-quality books for readers of all ages, including a large selection of children's books, movies, music, and other holiday-themed items. So this event doesn't just help the library with proceeds, but those proceeds go directly back to reading programs and other activities at the Bristol Public Library. So, great place to do your holiday shopping if you're relatives or anything like my in-laws, they'll only ask for books, and it'll be an easy place to go shopping for them. I have two other announcements. The Fire Board, I have a very bittersweet announcement. Jake Kowalski announced that he's going to be retiring as Fire Chief, effective January 18th, 2020. We're grateful to him for his years of service to the City of Bristol. Before becoming a Fire Chief, he was a firefighter, so he's been with the city for a long time, and I'm going to miss having him around City Hall. I just got to know him, and now he's leaving me. But I'm sure we'll have another wonderful qualified person taking over that role, protecting and helping the City of Bristol. The last report isn't really a report, but I felt it was worth sharing because I had my first meeting with the City Cemetery Commission. I know, hold your excitement. And I did not know what to expect, but let me tell you, I think these people are fantastic stewards of Bristol. They care so much about our history, and I was amazed to hear about some things that I didn't even know. We had like a memorial built in 1866 for the Civil War that's at West Cemetery, never seen it before, didn't know it was there, and they protect these places with lots and lots and lots of heart. So they had a really impressive list of ideas to go into 2020, and I'm excited to help them all come to fruition with that committee. But in my first month of meetings, every single meeting was fantastic and filled with a lot of people that really care a lot about Bristol, so it was just nice to see, and that's all I have.
None for me, thank you. So moving on to unfinished business, I did put on here the Center Square update. I have executed and signed the Letter of Intent with Tobacco Inc. for parcels 2, 3, 2 and 3? 1, parcel 2 and 3? So we are now moving toward executing the purchase and sales agreement on that property, and some of you may have noticed that there were test borrowings being done on parcel 10 at the end of November. They're now turning over that soil report to their engineers so that they can begin that process as well, and the Economic and Development Director has been meeting with a couple of other interested parties for the parcel that's directly across the street from here, and those discussions are ongoing. Does anybody else on the City Council have any unfinished business? Okay, moving on to new business. The first item is the traffic signs on the Memorial Boulevard. Because of the way the meeting schedules fall for December, the Park Board actually comes after the Police Board. So for expediency, I'd like to, from the City Council, refer the matter of the traffic signage on the Boulevard to the Police Commission so that we can start that process. There's a lot of signage on the Boulevard, which is supposed to be a vista, and some of them are starting to be deteriorated. The ones that Councilman Rosado and I noticed specifically are the ones that say "go to the right," and they are actually at the base of the World War I monument, and it really detracts from the monument. The Traffic Lieutenant has already weighed in on that, that there are no significant accidents that occur at that rotary, and so we are asking that those signs be removed or at least replaced in a more tasteful fashion, maybe along the base. So this item is under new business in order to get that process going without losing a month because of the way the meetings fall. So if someone could just make that referral, we will take care of that on Tuesday at the Police Board.
Motion to refer the signage issues on Memorial Boulevard to the Police Board.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Your Honor, can we add a geese-crossing sign to that referral?
We could.
Sorry, just kidding.
Working on the geese problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our second item is the Letter of Intent with Verge Inc. for the solar partnership. This was included in your packet. We put it on under new business because we weren't sure if we were going to get all of the information that was required, and we did. So just to reiterate the project background, another alternative energy system, this is actually the third that we've done in the last year and a half, starting with the fuel cell at Water Pollution Control, and then our virtual net metering agreement with Sunjet last month, and now we have Verge. Verge Solar is planning to construct a solar field on what is commonly known as the former Miners Farm location. So we've been working with them, and this is, executive summary is a product of that. We do have Mr. Malley here, and I'm going to make him come up and explain what virtual net metering and everything else is, and why it's important.
Mayor, thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Corporation Council, any takers, or I'll try this one? So, yeah, thank you. So I did, I did pen the executive summary in your packet, so V&amp;M is sort of cumbersome to explain, but basically, virtual net metering is something I learned about years ago on another project, and I've been waiting from a legislative perspective for this to become available for communities in Connecticut, and it is, on a limited basis, so it allows communities to partner with solar providers, or really any alternative energy providers, to team up, to apply for the ability to utilize virtual net metering through Eversource, right? So basically, in, when you think of like a, we'll use solar as the example, solar panels go on a residential home, for example. The homeowner connects directly to those panels, the panels feed his or her electric panel, and that electric panel powers all the different lights and televisions and whatnot in the house. That's a direct connection. Virtual net metering, there is no direct connection. The connection is on paper through an agreement, so if you're a municipality, for example, you could partner up with a very large solar field, right? And obviously, we can't directly connect, as an example, City Hall or a school building or our streetlights with that solar field that could be miles away. It just doesn't make sense for many reasons, but we can assign those energy users, those accounts, again, the streetlights, City Hall, a school, to that solar field, so we could take advantage of the lower rate of electricity that's being produced over there, and we can say that we're utilizing clean power. And what's great about what we did with Sunjet and what we're trying to do here with Verge, those are large solar developments that are here in Bristol, right? So when you drive by someday, you can look at the solar field, but you can also understand that the city is benefiting financially from the power that's being produced at those developments. So it's not an easy process. We have to be a little lucky and a little proactive, and it worked with Sunjet, and we're going to try to make it work with Verge Solar.
I think this is one of those things where we've seen that a lot of people aren't pursuing this, because it is, it's a difficult, especially from a government bureaucracy, it's not tangible. So we have acted very proactively and gotten ahead of that line, and I forgot what the exact number is, but the positive impact as to what this could do for our electrical consumption and our bills was significant over the, was it, was it five million?
The Sunjet proposal is a $5 million savings over 20 years, which is about a quarter million a year, and if we're successful with Verge, we may see similar numbers. I can't guarantee that, but you don't win if you don't play, so.
Exactly. And so what we've done is we've assigned 20 of our electrical accounts to Sunjet.
No, we, we actually only assigned four or five, I forget, you guys have seen them most recently.
What's the capacity? Four?
Yeah. Yeah, so four accounts have been assigned to the Sunjet project, and then, I don't know where we are with Miners, but it'll probably be pretty similar.
Yeah. So I think we have the capacity, and there's really the opportunity for significant cost savings on our everyday usage, so this will be a very good thing for us. So, does anybody have the motion in front of them?
I do, Your Honor. To approve the Letter of Intent for a virtual net metering credit agreement between the City of Bristol and Verge LLC, and to authorize the Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any documents to effectuate the Letter of Intent, subject to review by the Office of Corporation Council.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none?
No, I, sorry, I have something. So is this project going to be, sorry, through the chair, is this project going to be on the same parcel of land as the Sunjet?
Nope, so good question. Sunjet is actually developing a completely separate solar field, a little smaller on the Roberts Orchard piece.
Two different orchards.
I think last time they said, they said Miners, so I was just confused.
Yeah, so basically, we've done it once already. We've been successful, and we're trying to duplicate that success with this, the project at Miners Farm.
Okay. But to Councilwoman Barney's point, the virtual piece of it is that Sunjet also has three locations out of town that we're going to be taking advantage of.
That's right.
Plus the one in Bristol.
So Sunjet is not only developing Roberts Orchard, but three other developments elsewhere in Connecticut, but we stuck, we, we're also connected with those projects.
Yes, yeah, I recall. So then, the Verge project, though, will strictly be net metering from the Miners Field, or will it also be?
There's potentially another site that they're working on.
All right. And as far as like visuals go, have they spoken to you about anything that they do to try to minimize like issues for neighbors or naming problems?
So I've been very impressed with Verge because of their process in getting these projects sort of up to speed and under development, and they met with the Mayor and I, and the Public Works Director last week, I believe, and they have a very sort of detailed process that involves multiple public meetings with the city and neighbors. They're just not at that point yet, it's a little early. But yes, to answer your question, they have, they're going to be out front, you're probably going to see, learn and learn about the project here at City Council and other opportunities, but you're going to know about that, we just don't have those details quite yet.
Letter of intent sounds very new in the process, so I just was curious. Thank you.
Any other questions for Justin? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There is one other piece of new business that I need to bring to the table, and it's the matter of the Emergency Operations Director, Harley Graham, is out soliciting grants in order to equip all city buildings with the AED machines. So we need a blanket authorization in order to allow the Grants Coordinator to apply for those grants and to authorize me to sign those grants as they become available. So first, I'd like the matter of solicitation of AED grants by the Emergency Operations Director to be brought to the table.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, if someone would be so kind as to make the motion to authorize the solicitation of grants for AED devices to be placed within city municipal facilities, and to authorize the Mayor to execute them as they become available.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business by City Council members?
None.
Okay, moving on to resignations.
And there is one resignation, Your Honor, it's from Eric Schwab from the Board of Police Commissioners.
A motion would be appropriate to accept, place on file, and send him a letter of thanks. He has moved to Florida.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In terms of appointment... In terms of appointments, there are several. I'm gonna start with the Building Code Board of Appeals. The first one is to appoint Michael Wayne Labarre to replace Bob Wentlin, who's moved out of town, for an unexpired term to August of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second one for Building Code Board of Appeals is to appoint William A. LaCarte to replace Phil Vanilla, who passed away this past summer, for an unexpired term to August of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'd like to thank Councilman Han and Councilman Rosado for helping to find people. This is a very difficult board. In addition to having to find certain party affiliations for this one, they also had to have 10 years of general building experience. So we are now back to full capacity for that board. The next appointment is for the Assistant Corporation Council's office. Our full-time Assistant Corp Counsel, Tom Conlon, is up for a five-year term to December of 2024 and I'd like a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any conversation? Anybody having second thoughts?
I knew Tom in kindergarten.
Wow. Okay. I think we'll just call for a motion and let that go. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Attorney Conlon. Okay. Bristol Development Authority, we are going to appoint our former colleague, David Mills, to replace Michael Rivers for a five-year term on the Bristol Development Authority, soon to be called something else. Five-year term to December of 2024.
So moved.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now I'd like to appoint Andrew Rasmussen-Toller to replace John LaFreniere for a five-year term on the Bristol Development Authority to December of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd also like to entertain a motion to send letters of thanks to Commissioner Rivers and LaFreniere for their years of service to the BDA.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bristol Historic District Commission, we are moving to appoint Daniel Mike as a regular member to replace Miles Jennings, who has an unexpired term to January of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Concerns? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In terms of the Historic District, I did reach out to someone who had expressed interest in joining a board. I did not hear back from him, so hopefully that might be, that might replace the other alternate member. And we still have one vacancy on the Bristol Historic District Commission for an alternate member. That must be from the Republican Party, an independent minor party or unaffiliated voter. Moving on to the Housing Code Appeals Board, motion to reappoint Al Marco as a regular member for a three-year term to December 31st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, to appoint Eric Rosengren to replace Al Marco as an alternate member for an unexpired term to June 1st of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the third one for the Housing Code Appeals Board, to reappoint Richard Harlow for a three-year term to December 31st, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Rich Harlow is here, as is Eric Rosengren. Congratulations. Thank you for serving. Moving on to the Board of Park Commissioners, these are three reappointments that have come due in December. They are for Sandra Joanne Bogdansky, Robert Callett and Cynthia Donovan. We can take them as one vote. They are all three-year terms to December 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bristol Parking Authority to reappoint Mary Beth Mackowitz for a three-year term to April of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a vacancy on the Pine Lake Area Study Committee, if anybody is interested. And we have two appointments to the Police Commission for tonight. The first is to appoint Paul Lemieux to replace Eric Schwab, who resigned and moved out of state, to an unexpired term to 12/21.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the second appointment is to reappoint Kevin Fuller for a three-year term to December of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have Stafford School Roof Replacement Building Committee. The Chair of the Board of Education has communicated that she has asked Karen Vibber to replace Karen Hints on that committee. So do we have to take any action on that or refer to the nominating committee?
Actually, they, they are the nominating committee. The nominating committee are the three members. So I think it probably is good just to confirm their, their appointment of the nominating committee.
So the motion would be to confirm the appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation? Questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Water Commissioners to reappoint Sean Dunn for a three-year term to December 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On the Youth Commission, I'd like to appoint Karen Hints to replace Allison Wodowski, the citizen member who was a Section 2-9 resignation, for an unexpired term to June of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm waiting for confirmation from somebody to go onto the Zoning Board of Appeals. It must be an unaffiliated Democrat or independent voter. Zoning Commission to reappoint Mark Gagnon as an alternate member for a three-year term to December of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And to reappoint Timothy Gamash, alternate member for a three-year term to December of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tim is in the audience. Congratulations, Tim. So we are not going to do official charter revision appointments tonight, but I did want to update the council that, you know, I'd really like to get most of this done, including some of the original charges. So the Corporation Council's office and I and hopefully some of the members from the existing one who are going to serve again, we can get together and really talk about some of the parameters, about how big we want this to be, what the scope is gonna be. We continue to struggle from an efficiency standpoint with parts of the charter and I think it's time to have a conversation about some of the larger issues, including the city manager versus four-year term, versus term limits, versus why we have the height of curbing in the charter, things like that. So we'll have that conversation in January, but I did want to update everybody that to date, John Fitzgerald, who served as the Chair, who is a Republican member, Lori Ann Scotty, a Democrat, and Jack Crampitz, a Democrat, have agreed to serve again. So there will be some continuity. There are three members who have declined to serve again. We are waiting to hear from one. And John LaFreniere, an unaffiliated voter, is gonna be joining that panel as well. And I do believe John is here. So John will be joining charter revision for us, starting in January. So if anybody is so inclined and is interested in charter revision, which is really a very nuts and bolts, hands-on look at how government actually runs, that's, the charter's the document, or in some cases, how it should run but it doesn't, or how it's not running because of the charter, all three interpretations, this is something that is critical. So we will be discussing all of that. And for those of you, again, I will ask that you serve on boards and commissions as liaisons or voting members to take this message back, that it's imperative that the boards that are policymaking boards, as well as the department heads, review. We've done a lot in two years with the last two charter revisions, but there's a lot more that can be done. So it's either gonna be a big rewrite, which is what I would like to do, or we're gonna have to start, you know, looking at it in a very holistic way and doing something significant every time. So bring that back to your boards and commissions and we can regroup on that in January. That is all I have for appointments. So I will turn the agenda over to our city clerk for items 11 through 15.
Item 11, approval to submit a Connecticut Recovers Grant for up to $50,000 on behalf of the mayor's opioid task force, force, to the Connecticut Realtors Foundation and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12, resolution for city to enter into and deliver memorandum of agreement to Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management, regarding Homeland Security Grant Funds for DEMHS Region 3 for a federal fiscal year 2019. And there is a resolution to read.
Does anybody have the resolution?
I do, if no one else does. Be it hereby resolved that the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, may enter into, with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management, a memorandum of agreement regarding Homeland Security Grant Funds for DEMHS Region 3, including any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate for fiscal year 2019. And be it further resolved that Ellen Zappo Sassu, as mayor of the City of Bristol, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The town clerk further certifies that Ellen Zappo Sassu holds the office of mayor and that she has held that office since November 13th, 2017. Be it further resolved, this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? This is a roll call vote, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 The chair votes yes.
And the last three items are executive sessions. It's an executive session for the matter of Jay Kolikowski versus City of Bristol, another matter of the City of Bristol versus Copper Mine Properties, and the third is a claim by Christopher Pio regarding wetlands enforcement activities on East Main Street.
So Corporation Counsel Clift, can you please enumerate who will be attending?
We'll have our whole office go in. Try to hurry it along.
Okay, so we will start with, we'll be taking them in order. No outside counsel joining us. Okay, so at this point, we will ask for a motion to go into executive session for the items 13, 14 and 15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Into session?
Motion to come back into regular session.
Second.
Discussion? Let it be stated that no votes were taken in executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.